All right, would you all join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
including the first electman. Before we begin business, I just wanted to take a moment to thank our clerk, Ms. Donna Serrano, for her dedicated service to the town and to this body. It's been a pleasure to work with Donna. She's always been there for us when we need her, through the special meetings that we've had, through the snowstorms, whatever the conditions were, she's always made sure that she was here for us, timely, doing everything we've asked her to do, including incorporating large wordy documents into the minutes and listening to all of us speak when we probably can't even understand each other and somehow putting that eloquently into the minutes and making us look great. So, we're gonna miss you, Donna.
Thank you.
I want to say again, thank you on behalf of all of us for your service. And we all, individually, of course, came together to get you a nice card and a gift. I just want to present this to you on behalf of the entire council.
I think it's a brand-new Corvette. Red.
And the present is evenly divided by nine, so you'll never forget. There's no guessing, so you're welcome. Thank you for your service. You're surely gonna be missed. Moving on to the consent calendar, are there any comments, changes to the consent calendar?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I have one minor correction to the October 11th minutes. Under the EMS facility work group update, the word potential should be architectural, referring to the consultant.
Oh, I actually had two little ones.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Kelly?
That's all.
And I had...
One moment, Ms. ...
Sure, sure, sure.
Just a minute. Sorry, did you get that?
No, I didn't hear it.
It's on page three, under EMS facility work group report. Second to last word, potential should be architectural. We already have the consultant on board. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. La Palace?
I had two under, very little, under Town of Monroe, FEP Subcommittee, October 18th. The fourth sentence down should see, should say tax collector. It's just very picky. I don't even know why I'm mentioning it. And I saw another one on that page, but I can't find it now. That one's good enough.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else? All right, so with those two corrections to the minutes, unless there's any objections, I will pass the consent calendar. Moving on to communications, I actually wouldn't mind reading only the six communications we received this evening, but based upon our new practice, I'm gonna ask that those communications be incorporated into the minutes, and we will not waste our time reading them. Moving on to public participation, are there any members of the public who wish to participate? Mr. Kirsch, would you come forward? I know you, but the public may not. Name an address for the record.
Steve Kirsch, 35, April 21st. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under Communications, item E, is a memo from the first electman of the town council regarding bid waiver request for the lifting and leveling of sidewalks around town hall. I don't know if you're actually going to discuss this at all tonight, and I think you have a couple of questions, and maybe I can get answered, maybe I can go once after you. Number one, why are we doing this now? Number two, what is the cost of this project? And number three, the letters reference the fact that we're going to be replacing the sidewalks anyway. People remember, the sidewalks, the lighting, the driveway was all a requirement to be fixed as part of the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval for the police department renovation back in, I think the movement was actually 2012. So, I guess I'm wondering why we're doing a separate piece of work? How much it's costing as opposed to doing the job and doing it now? Again, I don't know if there's anything up tonight, but that's probably what they have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Kirsch. Any other members of the public wish to participate at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll close public participation. There are no appointments this evening. We'll move right into the action items. A is the Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety. It's Mrs. La Palace.
Okay, so I have a bunch of things. Number one, EMS at the Board of Finance meeting did a presentation. They have automated CPR mows because they would last 20 minutes. They're strapped on you, you the person who's possibly having a heart attack, and it'll pump against your chest for 45 minutes, where a policeman or fireman could not do it that long if he was by himself. So, they want three of them because there are three ambulances, and the three would be a total of, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kelly, I don't think I'm wrong, but three would be $41,000. So, the money is coming out of the capital reserve account. They have $187,000 in that account. So, they voted to spend $41,000 on these three automated CPRs, one for each of the ambulances, because again, they were dickering, well, do we get two? But who wants to be in the ambulance, the third ambulance, without a CPR? So, CPR meaning it's gonna do the CPR work. Number two, they had a presentation on the trails project. You may know the trails, the bicycle trails, go right now from Wolf Park through Trumbull, but you have to cross that road, which is relatively dangerous. So, they're looking to fix it up, they're gonna make the Wolf Park through Trumbull, behind the DPW. It's gonna cost $1.4 million, but the state is going to pay for it. The only thing we, Monroe, have to pay for is the design and engineering costs, which is $150,000. So, at this point, Mr. Mandros, you know, I meet with him, stopped and said, they're gonna have, they're gonna start having a Capitol meeting, because why should it be one decision at a time? So, they're going to have a Capitol meeting with Town Council and Board of Finance and decide, which we've heard before, how many, the Capitol meeting planned, kept by Ron Vanovsky, and then it would be presented this November, so they could get a list together and prior to it, you know, what is important for the next budget. Three fields, they did two transfers, the Board of Ed transferred, they had surplus, they gave the town $258,000 for two fields. It's gonna go into the capital fund, and it's money for the turf, and then they raised more than $158,000 for that turf, which is good, because we remember when they came to us and explained how they were gonna get money. Mr. Mandros also talked about, he would like the salaries for elected officials raised. So, he said, for example, like the town clerk, the town, the tax collector, the first electman, the treasurer, it should be on the Board of Finance agenda. The goal is to make a recommendation to Town Council, again, sometime in the near future, before the budget season starts. And then it would take effect after the election in 2017. And then the taxation ordinance, you know, the three of us are doing FEPs, and we finally got the taxation ordinance pretty much in order. It's just being tweaked a little bit. We had a meeting last, I think Monday or Tuesday, Mrs. Kansky, myself, and Mr. Kelly, there were about 20 senior citizens there. Mr. Kelly did a great presentation with a PowerPoint. Mrs. Kansky took notes, and people asked questions, it may be about five or six or seven or eight questions. They seemed to, you know, be, let's say, very interested in it. And from there, right this minute, and again, Mr. Kelly, just help me if I'm not saying it right, we got a notice from Mr. Fracassini, our town attorney. There's a few things that he wants, let's say, tweaked, and when we get them tweaked by Mr. Kelly, who's been in charge of doing the whole spreadsheet and the whole thing, we hope to come back to LNA in two weeks, and from LNA, come to the Town Council the same night, and then have the chair, if it's acceptable, call for a public hearing, which could be on November 28th. The main, the reason we're kind of rushing this is, it has to all be in effect by January 1st, because as of February 1st through May 1st, that's when the seniors who would be eligible have to make applications. So, and of course, that's to go into the budget. Right now, it's a $300,000 expense. If it becomes more than that, then of course, the town has to have the money there. That's, that was so far. And then I spoke to Mr. Davenport about the fire apparatus. He said it got, it got the approval of the Board of Finance. Again, he just texted me, and now it's being moved to Town Council. That, that's what I know. And so, going on, so education, Mrs. Kansky, you want to education? No, no meetings. So, let's go back to health. So, we have Mr. Kelly, health and EMS, if you want to go from one to the other.
Sure. So, health should be relatively quick. They have not met since our last meeting. However, one of their items, which was the public swimming pools proposed ordinance is on our agenda tonight, because that did get through LNA this evening, so that we can discuss a little bit later. As far as EMS, they have not met as well since our last meeting, they're meeting this week. Just to touch upon your earlier comment, the, I was aware the commission had discussed the automated CPR compression devices, they're called Lucas II items, the commission had recommended the town pursue at least minimally one of those devices. I knew that they were going to be pursuing that with Board of Finance and reviewing how that, how the funding would work, because there were different options available to them. So, I did hear from the chairman of EMS today, as well as from the chair of Board of Finance at that, the recommendation to purchase three, one for each ambulance, was discussed. My understanding is that it's going back to the EMS commission to refine the numbers a little bit further, and then the request for the capital expense will come back to us, so that we should be seeing that in the near future. I'll just touch real quick on the elderly tax relief comment. The, as you said, the meeting that we held at the senior center, I think, was probably around 20 individuals there. It was, I think, fairly well received. I think we only received one, I don't want to say negative, but one, one comment that was not entirely favorable, thought that the credit should be a little bit more. But other than that, I think folks were actually very pleased that the town wasn't looking to reduce the tax relief in any way, shape, or form. Obviously, it's our intent to expand upon it, and so we went through that and went through quite a few questions on the deferral process and how that would work, and I think, all in all, I think it was fairly well received. So, as far as the, we did receive preliminary comments from the town attorney, which I responded to, and my understanding is, we will be getting a formal opinion with any additional technical changes to the ordinance. I'm not, I will defer to our chairman as to whether that needs to go back to LNA or if timing is such. Depending upon the magnitude of the changes, perhaps it can just come straight back to council for us to consider at the next meeting, just to expedite it, not, I, my gut is that the changes from the town attorney would be relatively minor in nature.
So, you know what, I'll step out of that.
But, no, whatever, I'm just saying, you know, we may, we may be able to move that forward quickly, so, and I think that's it.
And then you can call for a public hearing. Okay.
Anything else, Ms. La Palace?
Let's see what else. We did health, we did education. Public safety, anything, Mr. Rooney?
No, just in regards to last time, about the $40,000 donation made for the K-9 officer. We had had a discussion about a vehicle that they considered using. I mean, currently, they're using the Crown Fix, but I guess the Ford Explorer is the more preferred vehicle, so we could talk about that at a later date. Nothing else.
With the self-driving cars, the doctor driving himself?
Anything further, Ms. La Palace?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to action. Item B is the Town Council Committee on Planning and Zoning, Public Works, and Parks and Recreation. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We actually have not met, met since the last meeting, so we'll have to schedule another one before the next town council meeting.
Okay. Seeing Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters, it's Mr. O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had just met prior to this meeting this evening. We discussed and voted to move proposed Chapter 420 Public Swimming Pools to Town Council for approval. We finished reviewing Town Council procedures, and we'll move that forward. And we discussed briefly how to best, how to best move forward on purchase policy and light coordinates. Our next meeting will be two weeks prior to Town Council.
November 14th.
Okay. Strategic Planning Committee, Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. The next meeting has been scheduled for, I can't remember the time, I believe it's November 9th. That could be...
It's a Wednesday.
They scheduled a couple of different meetings today, so I may be off. Now, so it's a different, it is scheduled for...
Yep.
The...
Third, the third.
The third?
Thursday, the third.
Yes, Thursday, the third. Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Moving on to EMS Facility Work Group.
That is the meeting that is scheduled for November 9th. We still have not received the schematic design report from our consultant, but I was assured that he will have that available for that meeting on the 9th.
Anything further?
Nope.
All right. Lastly, the First Electman's update, Mr. Vavreck.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Today, I sent you, I just got back from MetroCog, the draft conditions of the study that we've done on, one of 1125. It includes various traffic studies. It's a short one, it's only 909 pages. I started reading through it today, and there's quite a lot of things, I don't know if you even, the chief had a chance to read through it, but there's a lot of in-depth reporting in there about where the traffic points are and where the needs to be looked at by the state and by the town are. And that is all I have.
Mr. Vavreck, any questions for Mr. Vavreck? Ms. Martin?
Do you have any information on the questions that were raised this evening about the sidewalk information?
We had a safety committee that meets once a month, and KERMA is getting, for at least maybe 12 to 15 years, the safety committee has asked for an update of the lighting, update of the sidewalks, and now push is coming to shove, so the safety committee had Mr. Nowacki go out and price some different various ways of fixing it. And one of the ways to fix it was lifting and leveling sidewalks around town hall. This will make them close to permanently fixed. There's still a few things outside of it that have to be fixed, but in that safety committee is the, is the planning administrator and HR and EMS and fire, police representative, and it was pretty heavily weighed that we would go out and look at this pricing, and again, like we do with most of our stuff, we bring it up to the different COGS in the area and get COG pricing, which is better than anything we've ever gotten, and you will be seeing that contract hopefully soon, as soon as we get everything in line.
Could you explain what this COG, this whole thing is?
Council of Governments. Mostly what happens, and what's happened for many years, is they have a consortium, it's a consortium of different, different towns, what this is, and most of, almost every one of our bids that we've been putting through are all coming through the state bidding process, which is pretty much the way they buy everything up in the bigger COGS, which is 40, 50 towns. So, that pricing power is what we use here.
Ms. Kansky.
I just, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Martin.
Can you tell me when you anticipate doing this work?
That I have to check on. Unfortunately, Chris has been out the last few days with a family thing, they just decided to do this last week, so I have to talk to them about all the other peripherals. I just wanted to put on the, on the agenda for you to know about it.
Because it's really a spring or summer kind of thing, and not...
Well, I'm sure that whoever this person is will, will tell us. I haven't had a chance to talk to Chris yet.
Ms. Martin?
And the cost?
Again, I haven't seen the actual pricing of yet, I just wanted on the agenda so you'd know.
Okay. And the, the point made about there was going to be improvements made in the future, why would, why spend this money now? Whatever amount of money...
Well, the sidewalks, we've been told by KERMA, our insurance agency, that they have to be fixed once and for all over the fines.
That's the question. They have to be fixed, not right now?
They have to be fixed as soon as possible. We have to at least make the attempt to be fixing them, which we haven't done.
Up until this point. The COG that you were talking about, the, my understanding is that that, that's not a, for the, for any company or organization, it's not that they have been approved or put out the rest, the right, or the lowest bid, it's just that they submit certain information to the state, and then the state compiles that, right?
I didn't hear the beginning of your question, I'm sorry.
The, the process that you, that we use, the town used in lieu of going out to bid, was going through this state process.
Right.
And my understanding of that is not that any of the companies are not in, in the well thought of, I guess. It's not, it's not the same as a bid process. There's just information that you fill out to, to get on this list.
I'm not missing where you're saying that well thought of.
I'm sorry?
I'm not, you said it's not well thought of?
No, I'm not indicating that any of these organizations are not reputable, but it's not the same as a bid process, right?
Correct.
Okay, but we continue to do that.
Mr. ...
Mr. Vavreck, you just, correct me if I'm wrong, you just said that you haven't seen the cost of...
I personally have not known.
But for you to send, hold on, may I borrow this? For you to send the Town Council Chairman a bid waiver request, don't you know what you, don't you need to know what you're waiving? Your letter says, "I am waiving the bidding process for the lifting and leveling of the majority of the sidewalks." You just confirmed that you don't know the cost, and you're therefore waiving the bidding process of a number that you don't know?
That is what, you're gonna see a contract and see that, but I recommend that, yes.
I find that troubling, that the chief elected official is waiving the bidding process on a number that he doesn't, that he doesn't know, which I think was just...
I have been assured, like we are with all of our bid waivers, that this is the lowest possible price, and you'll see that when we go through it.
And I can understand that if this, if this is coming to you, to Stephen Vavreck from Chris Nowacki, I can understand that comment at this point. But then when you flip it over and you send it to us, if your, if your director of DPW told you this is the lowest bid and you said, "Okay," how do you write this, how do you write this portion and sign it without seeing the number? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Kansky, thank you.
Well, I don't think it's the lowest bid. In this letter, it says it's the only vendor in Connecticut who utilizes a high-density polyethylene product, so you haven't gotten any bids at all, anyway, right?
And that's why we're waiving the bid process.
But you still don't know the number.
But Chris also says, "Although the project is not budgeted for, we have approved from the finance department to have this repair paid for with available funds from the town hall maintenance contracted services account." So, apparently, the money's there, whatever amount of money it is.
We don't know how much it is.
Right, I certainly agree with this.
Anybody else? Mr. Vavreck, you want to give us an update on the RFP for the fire trucks?
I just heard back from Mr. Mandros, let me ring that up for you. Because as you've heard at the Board of Finance meeting, it was approved through them, and here's the problem, as you all know, I know Mr. Leo was on this email trail, the problem was that Chris Kreis emailed, Mike spoke to Josh and the Board of Finance, worked through all the process, but he admits here he had to explain the same way to you guys, which he wasn't able to do. Basically, what had happened is, there was a, they had called out and, as was very transparent, telling you about all these different things with the fire trucks. Josh Kreis put out the RP for the trucks. One vendor came back, they selected him. A vendor later on, which, you know, the fire people aren't here, complained that this guy does this all the time with a very sobriety of different towns, this is why they didn't choose him, they said he can't, does what he, can't do what he said he was gonna do. Again, Mike and the Board of Finance were very happy with what Josh and the firemen that night said. I was under the impression that it was being forwarded to you, and I guess it was not, so that is, I will reach out to see why that didn't get on the agenda and why it wasn't explained the same way as, as Mike, Mr. Mandros says here. But they were very happy with the explanation that Josh and the fire crew gave.
What is the, what was the explanation?
I wasn't at that meeting. I left, I had another, we had a library meeting that night.
And this was, the Board of Finance was happy with what Josh...
Why don't you describe for me what, how you think the RFP bidding process works? In other words, the procedure? How does, how does that procedure run its way through the town?
We're not gonna go there right now, Mr. Leo.
Well, I'm curious on what your expectation is, if there's an RFP that essentially comes out of your, your office.
Exactly. I was told it was supposed to come in here.
And the bids are, then, there are that process, correct? Into that, into the...
Mr. Leo, I was told it was supposed to be here.
I want to understand the process, I want to make sure we're on the same page.
You know the process, Mr. Leo, I'm not gonna go through...
I know the process, I want to make sure you know the process, because I'm concerned you don't, to be honest with you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Leo, I'm sorry for your doubts, I'm not gonna answer your questions.
And the fact that you're telling me that the Board of Finance is happy with the bid and that all of this communication happened to Board of Finance is very troubling to me, because that's not how the process works. My understanding is one bid was returned, and that this other individual insinuated that hundreds of thousands of dollars could have been saved, and that certain aspects of the bid may have resulted or caused there to be one bid, one of which was the timing of the bid. Is that accurate or not accurate?
Not accurate at all, Mr. Leo.
That's not accurate? So, what is accurate? Tell us, tell us about the, the...
Mr. Leo, I'm not going back and forth with you.
Tell us about the proposals.
Sir...
Tell us about...
I'm not gonna tell you anything, Mr. Leo.
I asked you for...
I'm not gonna tell you anything.
An update. Well, this is my meeting, you're present, and you're here to provide information to us, and you are the only source of information regarding the RFP that came out of your office, so my question is, how many bids or contractors responded to that RFP? Do you know?
I know, Mr. Leo.
Well, do you know?
I think you know.
So, you don't know. You don't know, you don't know, or you're unwilling to provide the information?
This is growing rather open.
You don't know, or you're unwilling to provide the information?
I'm not gonna tell you anymore than you already know, Mr. Leo.
You said you had an expectation that it was on our agenda, so how would that be on our agenda?
I was told, we're the Board of Finance chairman, it was gonna be on the agenda, Mr. Leo.
Why would the RFP come from the, your RFP come to the Town Council from the Board of Finance? Is that, is that how you think the process works?
How many times have we gone through the different things, if the Board of Finance approves it, you'll approve it? How many times has that gone through like that?
What was that comment?
How many times has the Town Council said, "The Board of Finance approves it, you'll go through the process." You've already approved the RFP before. I don't know what to tell you.
I don't recall ever saying that, that just could be a mistake.
No, then I'm Mr. Mandros is lying too. That's good.
If the Board of, your allegation is that the Town Council has said, "If the Board of Finance approves it, then we will approve," is that what he said? Does anybody else have any request of information about the RFP? I'm confused, I'm not sure what the response is, and I'm not sure how I would know. Are you refusing to answer that question?
I'm sorry you're not communicating properly, I don't know what else to tell you.
Communicating properly with whom?
You don't talk to my office, you don't talk to me.
I'm asking you a question now, you're not, why would I waste my time coming to your office to ask you a question that you can't respond to now on an open Town Council meeting? I'm asking you a question, I'm looking for an answer. Are you refusing to answer the question, or do you not know?
Mr. Email, Mr. Leo, you've been on all the email train, you know exactly what's happening. Why don't you explain?
Are you refusing to answer the question?
Yes, sir, I am.
Are you refusing to answer the question or do you not know?
I'm refusing to answer your question at this time, yes.
So you do not know what the response to the...
Oh, Mr. Leo, I've had enough, have a good day.
Thank you.
See you later.
Alright. Any other questions for the first electman? Oh, he's not here, that's common, moving on. A, Chalk Hill updates, uh, like I said, we've kept Chalk Hill and will continue to keep Chalk Hill on the agenda until there is a resolution in sight, at least a plan. We don't even have a plan yet, so, with that said, there's nothing to vote on, but it's certainly open for discussion. So if anybody wants to add anything regarding Chalk Hill, have any questions regarding Chalk Hill at this time, I'd be happy to give you the floor.
I just wanna know how we can get a date for a plan to be provided to us. How, how do we go about?
If the first electman didn't walk out, you could've asked him, but I, I think, um...
How can we push to get a plan?
Here, here, here's, as I said at the last meeting, I wasn't at the last meeting, but the meeting before that, I, um, this council recognized Chalk Hill and the issues with Chalk Hill. And immediately upon the formation of the Strategic Planning Committee, the first item of business as referenced in the report regarding Chalk Hill out of Strategic Planning was Chalk Hill. And that, in, in my opinion, as we all know, Strategic Planning made a number of requests trying to gather information and based upon the response issued a report, uh, based on the information that we had at that time. Since that time, um, there's been a number of, call them rumors or interests, uh, potential plans, but nothing has come to fruition. We've, we've asked the same question over and over again, but have maintained that it's the position of this council. And I think every one of us unanimously agreed that we would certainly not move forward on any decision that was properly before us without public input. As a segue, I'll also just quickly discuss the problem that I had in the broken promise I made to all of you that I would provide you with a draft of a letter in response to the judge. And I will admit that I didn't do that and here's why. Because I spent five or six hours drafting a very simple letter, because I did not know what to put into the letter based upon the status coming from this body. I, I certainly know, living in the town, and I certainly know things I've heard and know, but I, I didn't wanna report in a letter anything that was outside of the scope of, of our duties here and what we know here, without having a formal vote. We haven't voted on anything. I, I don't think it was fair for me to give my personal opinion and, and, and indicate that it's the opinion of all of us, even though I probably know that it probably was. And, and so I struggled with drafting and, and at the end I concluded that it was inappropriate at this time based upon my reading of the judge's response and everything that was going on to even write a letter based upon, because there's no plan. There is no plan, we have no plans. I didn't know what to write, to be honest with you. And I think the, it's kinda, I feel the same way in response to your question, is we're, we're prepared to act. We've done everything we possibly can, I think. I don't think that we can do much more, um, other than react at this time. Because we know what the budgetary situation is. In that regard, I have spoken to Mr. Manjos, Mr. O'Hara, and Ms. Lane. And I have been for the last two weeks trying to coordinate. And I have asked that we call a joint meeting of all elected officials to discuss Chalk Hill. I wanted to do that, to be honest with you, last week. Uh, as you can imagine, it's very difficult to coordinate a meeting of all four. We can barely coordinate meetings for our own subcommittees with three members, let alone, I don't know what the number is, but four elected bodies. Um, I think we've agreed on November 7th is the date that's being thrown out there. Selfishly, I was trying to keep it on the night that town council was meeting and I think other boards and bodies were doing the same thing, so we had a little bit of a power struggle. But, um, that was the night that worked for the, the majority of individuals. We have not formalized that yet, but the intention is to bring together for the first time, um, on the record, all four elected bodies. And I intend, um, in my discussions with, at least with the other chairs, we intend inviting, um, any of those individuals or parties who have an interest in Chalk Hill or knowledge of Chalk Hill, which would include, um, Mr. Zamary, Mr. Nowacki, Ms. Yeager, who has had some interest in utilizing the facility for various things. I think Mr. York has had an interest, um, utilizing the building for CERT. There are a few other boards and commissions who have identified a potential use. So anybody who SPC had knowledge of, um, that wanted to use that building, I would invite them to this meeting and I would encourage, um, once, um, once it's fully formally established, I would, obviously I think all of us reach out our tentacles and to try to get the public to, to appear and that will give us a good starting point. Uh, because it's, it's the same circle we're all fighting with. When I speak to the chairs, you know, Board of Ed is, is not interested, but if it's gonna stay open, they may have a use. Finance has the budgetary concerns. We have the same concerns as, as they do and certainly, uh, planning, I would say, has certain other concerns regarding its use and what's permitted and what's not permitted. And without knowing who's going to be there and when and how, it's, it's very difficult. So I think it's gonna be more of a hypothetical conversation, but that's at least, that's at least the only thing that I could think of to, to do at the present time.
Can I make a, just a brief statement?
Sure.
And I wanna emphasize that this is not a political statement coming from me.
Right.
But I am truly, just that the Office of the First Selectman and the other departments under him should have presented a comprehensive plan by this time. And it's very disappointing and I think we're all floundering, because there has been no one at the helm to say, "These are the things that we should be doing." And I, I'm very disappointed in that. So I just wanted to go on record as saying that.
I can go out on a limb and say we probably all echo the same opinion, but, um, thank you for your comments. Uh, Mr. Keporn.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I had a few questions for the first electman this evening, so I'll pose them, uh, well, I'll, I'll try to make it more of a statement. When Chalk Hill was turned over to the town several years ago, um, we were having discussion. I was on the council in this 2012 timeframe and I remember talking about Chalk Hill before Sandy Hook happened in the beginning part of 2012. And I remember saying it was something like every month that went by, something else was breaking, something else was happening. Now, on the other side of Sandy Hook leaving, I feel like a couple of months ago I was saying it was every week. Now, last week I was in town hall, I saw Mr. Nowacki. I said, "Hi, Chris, how are you?" He said, "Good." He said, "So, Chalk Hill?" Those were his first five words. I said, "Buh." I, I'm not sure. I saw Mr. Cooper in the hallway. I said, "Hi, Frank, how are you?" He said, "Good, Chalk Hill?" I couldn't get down the hallway, I was trying to, I was trying to get down the hallway. I spoke to, um, Wendy, uh, from the food pantry. I said, "Wendy, did you, Wendy Jalles," I said, "Did you ever get the generator?" She said, remember we had that big discussion, she said, "Um, no." I said, "Why not? What happened?" She said, "Well, remember we went to Board of Finance and we all agreed that the generator from Chalk Hill could come over, but then the Google Docs came out and the Google Docs had the food pantry moving from where it was now to the Chalk Hill on the basement, so the, the generator didn't get moved." I said, "Oh," I said, "Well, we still don't know what's..." So then she said, "Chalk Hill?", question mark. And I think, um, from the last update the first electman gave, not the meeting, but the previous one, that we were waiting for a fin- financial analysis from someone. And the question that I was gonna ask to him tonight was, what, what does he want to happen and when does he want it to happen? Because as Mrs. Kansky just said, this has to come from, i- if, if the first electman wants the building to be open, it should come from the first electman. Um, the department heads seem to be ready to talk, that's at least, or at least be in the room for the discussion. That's my interpretation of my conversations with them. So I echo Mrs. Kansky's comments about some type of dates. Again, I'll, I'll reiterate what I said two meetings ago, this is a classic case of project management. And a very simple spreadsheet I feel could solve a lot of our problems, but that seems to be too complicated, or maybe I'm asking too much. But the, the questions are still there and, uh, we'll see what happens next. Thank you.
Ms. Martin.
Um, yeah, well, I was gonna say, when we do the joint meeting, are we gonna be working off our committee report? I mean, is that where we start, since we have nothing else?
The Board of Finance has the money, money angle.
Ms. Martin, all I can say is we've asked ad nauseam for the plan. We've been told in response almost every single time that Google Docs has all of the answers. My personal opinion is that, as I've said, I'm not gonna continue to repeat myself, but I, I think it's an unorganized hodgepodge of doc, collection of documents that, that don't make any coherent sense and I...
Well, that, I mean, that's...
The only report that we have that is the strategic planning report plus, and, and its attachments and exhibits, um, which are substantial and, um, and whatever's on Google Docs and whatever other boards and commissions may have and including whatever the first electman brings to the table at that meeting. I mean, my, I guess I, my hope is that, um, in response to your question, Ms. Kansky, I hope that is the quote-unquote date that, um...
But I think you hit it right on the head, it's hodgepodge.
Right.
Can I ask how that meeting is gonna run? Is the selectman running it?
No, the selectman's not running it. It's a joint meeting, it would, it would be noticed as a joint meeting of all four boards and commissions that, that, we haven't had the arm wrestling match yet as to who is going to chair it, but I don't think that matters. I think it will go smoothly. We all seem to work together. But, uh, no, it's...
So you're feeling then, this is, this in, um, in conjunction with the Google Docs is, is where we start at this meeting? Because that's going back...
I think, I, again, I don't wanna have this meet, I don't wanna have that meeting now, but I think it's, we, we all spill everything that we have onto the record and have a discussion, like we've done many times before, like we do every time we have budgetary issues, like we've done many, many times on issues in town, including discussions on Chalk Hill four years ago.
And go for consensus, yea or nay?
Consensus direction. I mean, let's, let's understand, let's understand some things. We, we don't have control here, we have, here, here's the bottom line. The, the town council has the charter purview of reviewing contracts and agreements. Other than that, Board of Finance controls the money and line items. We can assist Board of Finance with approving transfers from other areas. So that's really the extent and the scope of what we can do within our powers regarding Chalk Hill. If the first electman wishes to move the entire town hall to Chalk Hill and he can afford to do that with the money that he's been given, he can, technically can do that, as long as it doesn't require our input or Board of Finance's input. At least that's my personal opinion, and maybe I'm right or maybe I'm wrong, but I think he can do that. I think there are a lot of things that he can do without council, without Board of Finance, without Ed and without, maybe without planning. I don't know about planning and zoning, but that's a different, that's a different animal. But, but, so the question is, is it, is, is it worth? The way I look at Chalk Hill right now is, and I've said this, is right now there has been, there has been an interest by Mr. Cooper in moving forward with Chalk Hill so that he can continue to run his programming for the benefit of our town residents. And his further thought is that, I believe this is on the record, Mr. Kellogg, correct me if I'm wrong, but Mr. Cooper's opinion is that if, if Chalk Hill's going to be utilized for these programs, that it would be important for someone to man the building and why not him, since he's the one using the program? So I don't think he has any intention of permanently relocating to Chalk Hill, but so long as he's running programs out of there, he would be naturally, his office would be the office to move over there. That's the only, I, uh, coherent plan that's been presented to me at least. Uh, so I guess the question would be, if that's the only plan we have, we need to make a decision with the other boards as to whether that use is permitted, that's planning and zoning, and whether or not the money is sufficient to get those programs through this fiscal year. We know that's not there, we know that for a fact. We know there's $50,000 in that line item and that's not gonna get them, if it gets much colder outside, we're gonna be having a special meeting before November 7th potentially. So that's, that's, yes.
I have a different angle on that. I wanna know what the cost benefit is of doing that.
I agree with you. That, no, that is, that's the same, we're saying the same, we're saying the same thing. We're saying, is, is that, if that's the only use, is it worth it? And then as we expand upon that, is it worth it? That's, that's what we're doing. But right now we have nothing, so there's nothing to evaluate. Is that accurate?
Yep.
Quite accurate.
Yeah, because renovations are, are, are a lot for that building.
That's, that's a different issue. Anybody else wanna talk about Chalk Hill?
I'll just, I'll just add that, I mean, certainly the SBC report, um, I think, you know, was comprehensive at the time. There had been some, there had been some changes since then in terms of additional interest that was expressed after the report came out. More information has come forward now, you know, I, I don't think we've gotten, I know that there was some preliminary discussion over capital costs there from Board of Finance, but I don't have any, any final thing. And, and we certainly don't have, the, I mean, that report laid out a bunch of areas that needed to have some due diligence done to prove viability of that building, depending upon the, and a lot of it, that report discussed, that a lot of things were depending upon the intended use. Depending upon your programming, what you wanna do there defines the zoning issues, it defines the build-out issues, it defines, do you need to air condition the entire facility or not? So these, all these things, all these questions. And get us through that time period so that due diligence and viability could, could take place. Unfortunately, we've burned through so much of that time right now that I think it's getting to the point that I don't know, you know, what else we can do other than, I, I mean, I like this idea of a joint meeting so we can at least ensure that we all have the same information that we, we believe we have at this point. And, um, I, you know, I would just, I would echo that. I think, you know, the, the sooner we would, can get a, a comprehensive plan that outlines things and, I mean, and Ms. Kansky, that's what we wanted from the, from the beginning, is, is something that we can do a cost benefit analysis on and say, you know, is this viable or not? So I think, uh, I agree, I think that's where we're at, I don't...
Can I ask if, if all the boards have your strategic plan? Can we get a copy for everybody?
I am fairly certain that Tanya distributed it broadly. It may not have been immediately after the council had adopted it, but sometime after that, I'm fairly sure that she did.
If the meeting is noticed in response, I'll make sure that that report is sent out with preliminary documents.
Right, thank you.
It's all, interestingly enough, it's not on Google Docs.
May I make just a brief additional comment?
Sure.
I also, I'm sitting here thinking during the discussion, I also just wanna say that it's kinda insane to think that, I, I, this, this comment comes, I read the Board of Finance minutes from the last meeting and I saw under Chalk Hill that there was, I'm paraphrasing, there was something that said Mr. Manjos and, uh, Ms. Rigby would work preliminarily on some type of spreadsheet so that they had something to talk about in their meetings. I don't know if it happened, it was in the minutes. We're sitting here, having this discussion about Chalk Hill and we're, the Board of Finance, the Board of Ed, the P and Z, the Town Council, we're all volunteers. Mr. Chairman, you personally, and I will include Mr. Kellogg in this, have done more for this building than you probably ever should have. And the first selectman, and, and it's not his department heads, cause from my conversations, they are ready to sit down and talk. So it, it is, it's, it's, this is not gonna come out good if it ever gets in the Courier, but it is crazy to me that we are at this point, six years or five years from beginning this conversation.
It's even crazier that I actually agree with you.
You know, 2016, it's...
Anybody else? I know we're kind of beating a dead horse.
And the public, I get comments in, in the public all the time, what's going on with Chalk Hill? And I can't make any answer.
I'll, I'll say one of the things that just came to my mind, cause I see Ms. Aguilar sitting in the back of this room and I recall from flashing back to 2012 and, and let's not forget that nothing was done with Chalk Hill then either, except for some really ambitious efforts by Ms. Aguilar and Ms. Plunkett, I believe, and a number of individuals were really working hard to try to put together a plan with, uh, it was kind of, they were cut off by the unfortunate tragedy in the use of the building, but, I mean, we're, we weren't building on much, uh, it was a lot of volunteer effort in 2012 and it continues to be. But that's why we were elected and we're gonna continue to, to, to do our job. And I know that I have full confidence in this body as all the other bodies that will, will do the right thing with the information that we, we have. Alright, moving forward, B, revisions to the Code of Ethics, I, I've been keeping that on here just to have a fumble vote on the final language. There was some misunderstanding about, uh, legal opinion and when we're gonna get it and if we're gonna get it, so we'll table that for now. But that will be, as I previously promised, all the ordinance will go out together and we're kind of up against a deadline at this point now because we really wanna move forward with these. So my intention is absolutely have these all prepared with legal opinions for a formal vote and then public hearing by the next... and then public hearing by the next meeting. We really have to almost have that happen if we want to get the tax abatement moving forward, and we might as well, we've been waiting to piggyback them together.
Several that are, yeah.
So we can save some money. Moving on to new business, the Board of Ed teachers contract. The only reason why I have it on the agenda is, I think we discussed this already. We were prepared, we had a pretty forthcoming, I think, full discussion with Mr. Agastin, and he was present last time, and unbeknownst to us, it had not been fully executed at that meeting. So the window, the clock, proverbial clock, had not started ticking. I then received notice that it had been fully executed, so I just wanted to make sure that it was appropriately on our agenda during the window of time that we had to approve or disapprove. I, I have no intention of, of, of doing anything formally with this. I'm not mandating that we call for a vote. My, my, my personal, you know, as everybody knows, we, if we do nothing, it passes. We can then formally approve it or, or disapprove it, and then the arbitration process kicks in. So just to be clear, if anybody has, wants to make a motion to free to do so, but I think we've received all the information we possibly can receive. We know it's been approved by Board of Education, and I, speaking personally, I'm not sure what else we can make an educated decision on at this particular level. But, Ms. Kansky, do you want to say something?
Can you, can you tell us when the 30 days are up?
30 days?
It's dated on the 15th.
It's the 6th, October 5th, I think it's...
Oh, yeah, October 5th.
Stamped on the front, October 5th, so November, honor about November 5th.
Okay, thank you.
It could be October 30th based upon the execution date. But it was this meeting or nothing. So again, my, my personal pitch in this chair, I know in the past, sometimes it's on our agenda, sometimes it's not. If I keep it off, it does not give anybody the opportunity to make a motion, to speak, to talk about it. That's not something I want to do, so that's why it's here. All right, seeing nothing, I will move on to item B, which is the proposed new Chapter 420 Public Swimming Pools of the Town Code. It's a public health ordinance, Ms. Lapels.
I, I make a motion to approve the proposed new Chapter 420, quotes Public Swimming Pools of the Town Code.
Motion by Ms. Lapels, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Martin. For discussion purposes, we discussed this in LNA this evening. It did pass 3 to 0 to the fourth of Town Council. Mr. Callog has been working on this along with all the other health-related ordinances, so I'll pass the floor to you, Mr. Callog, if you want to make a few comments about this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes. So, as you said, I work for the Board of Health in regards to this. This proposed language has been unanimously approved by the Board of Health. The intent here is for us to adopt, again, as you recall, you know, there were many, many parts of our Town Code that did not necessarily keep up to industry norms, if you will, because, you know, since we had a district in place prior. So one of the areas that the Board of Health wanted to fill in was a public swimming pool ordinance. The intent here is to kind of fill in the gaps where the state statutes, the state public health code, doesn't provide a lot of specificity in exactly what the health director and the department are supposed to be doing in regards to public swimming pool inspections and regulations. So you'll see most of this is, also gets in, around the local licensure and the due diligence, I'm sorry, the due process that would be followed in the event an operator was cited or license had to be suspended or revoked. And it does provide some technical standards as well, in terms of what would define imminent hazards, et cetera. So that said, other than that, it's a fairly straightforward, one of the, one of the more, more shorter ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Callog. Any comment regarding this?
The motion is to approve, or...
If I, if I could just say one thing, so this does need to go to the town attorney, so it has not had town attorney review. So along with the others, it should...
Yeah, so again, same process, we'll just look for a consensus on this, and then I'll formally vote, and we'll have one busy night. I'll bring donuts, donuts and coffee when we're going on all the ordinances. And, but the intention is to have this ready for next meeting as well.
That would be great.
All right, so we have a consensus, everybody, yes, and out of the head is good?
Sounds good.
Yep, yep.
All right, moving on to new business item. Thank you, Mr. Callog, for your hard work on that. And we mentioned, Mrs. Brolk, our director, was at, health director was at LNA meeting. She did ask if her presence was necessary at council. I did tell her that I didn't think it would be necessary, and it looks like that was correct. I just wanted the director to reflect that. To C, is the tax abatement, yes, I'm sorry.
I believe that Mrs. Lapels made a motion on the...
She didn't.
I did, yeah.
You just withdraw your motion.
I can withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Even choking out whenever you're chewing on it. Doing, doing your public service over there, thank you. Moving on to C, tax abatement application for 35 Cambridge Drive. I am going to call for a public hearing on this application for November 14th, 2016, at 7:30 PM, just before Town Council. It did, as per the letter, was presented on two occasions to the Review Committee and approved by LNA. That starts a, we have a 60-day, if I'm correct, a 60-day block to act upon this application one way or the other, or it passes without any action. So it starts from the first time it's on our agenda, so we're not in a huge rush, but we do have to hold one public hearing before taking any action. With that, we are finished for this evening, except for the second public participation. Would anybody like to participate in the second public participation? This may be the most ripe second public participation session we've ever had since we've been really...
So much unfinished business.
Yeah, so much unfinished business. No one wants to take an opportunity. All right. Seeing that, I'll close second public, public participation. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I wish my Ms. Lapels, is there a second? A second by Mr. Rooney, all those in favor? Good night.
We'll miss you, Donna.
Donna, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna, she just, she was...
7:30. Donna, I'm so sorry, I, now when you see me, when you see me in court, it's going to be, it's going to be terrible, huh? I'll have to run.